Here we go.
The Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty four, Inglewood City Council meeting is now called to order. Everybody please stand. Officer Hall, lead us some bread.
It's ridiculous.
Come on to the mic.
Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for this beautiful day, and Father, thank you for everything you have done for us, Heavenly Father. Continue to guide us and protect us, Heavenly Father, from seen and unseen danger. Shere, pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge your name, Miss.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh wow. Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott. Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Okay, thank you. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, should we add anything, takeaway?
I have one suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Under presentations, Katrina Vaughn is here, the host of the veteran stand down.
Uh huh.
Um, I'd like to add her under presentation. She turned in a public comment card, but hers is more so a presentation, which is real quick.
Real quick, okay. In fact, we'll do her first, because AC is going to be a little longer, so we'll do her first.
Okay.
Okay, any other additions, deletions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some will.
Let's go, wow. Move to support it, discuss it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay.
Oh, it's just, um.
Presentation, Ms. Vaughn, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Nolan, good evening, council members and city of Inglewood residents. My name is Katrina Vaughn, and I am here on behalf of Vaughn Raspis. Um, to express my deepest appreciation and appreciation to the city of Inglewood for allowing Vaughn Raspis to come here and use you as a whole city for our Veterans Resource Fair. It took place on November the ninth and the tenth, and we held a fair for approximately eighty-six veterans who came through. They received undergarments, food, clothes, and grooming services. So I would like to extend a special appreciation to the chief of police, Ms. Tamika Jenkins. Thank you for coming out, you and your husband. And pro, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Stephen Chisholm, thank you for coming out too. And especially, uh, can't miss Mister Mayor Byron Nolan for coming out on a game day. I truly appreciate your support and effort. Um, it was significant, and you made a big difference in the lives of the veterans. So thank you for coming out. And as a small token of my appreciation, I just wanted to give you guys something. And you can also display it in the city hall, so it's just a token of my appreciation. You looked up for it and bringing a show.
Oh wow. Anybody get a chance to see this? First of all, we need to thank her, because she did all the work and put the event on. Really appreciate it.
This is great.
We'll find a place for that. Okay, our next presentation, Inglewood's Guide to Planning and Development, AC Wade.
Good evening, uh, council and residents. And actually, residents, if you want, there is a copy of the document that I'm about to discuss linked with the agenda online, if you want to look at it. Because I actually don't have a presentation, and I won't be holding you that long. So, um, I'm just letting you know that our guide to development is completed and actually recently approved. Um, and so when I last spoke with you guys about redevelopment-ready, you know, community, and how far we have progressed towards certification, um, this was actually the last item left under Best Practice Three. So I can also report that we're fully aligned with Best Practice Three now. Um, and so this is a requirement to be certified. And the whole purpose of this guide is to really put the essential information for how to work with planning and community development towards developing a project, including who are your key contacts? Who are the reviewing bodies, like who will be reviewing and approving your application? Um, what the different applications are? Where can you find your zoning ordinance and, you know, applicable laws? Um, and then there's, uh, flow charts towards the back that hopefully make it a little bit easier to kind of understand. You know, if you submit a site plan, who will you be going to first? And then if it's approved or denied, what are your options? Um, and so I know that this is essentially required in terms of the public, but I also wanted to make council know, uh, that this was a resource that was available, because I know that recently there's been some, uh, site development or, you know, things that have come before you. And hopefully this will be like a good resource to help you make more informed decisions when it comes to, um, certain projects that may come before you for approval. So that's the gist of this. Does anyone have any questions regarding it?
This, what, thank you, uh, I did take a look at it, and I saw the flow charts. And it's always good, because as the administrations change out, it helps us up here when we're talking to business applicants, um, just explaining processes and procedures, because they'll try to tell us how another city did it, and how we're wrong. But it's like, this is what our process is, and this is what we follow. Also, when they try to say staff didn't follow this, and you say, okay, point out to me where staff didn't follow it. You have that hard document in front of you or online, whatever the case may be. And that way you could kind of determine, well, which step did you think you ran? Was it rezoning, was it, uh, whatever the case may be. So this is very helpful, especially when we have other entities such as, uh, who was that? Inglewood Housing that came before us, and they needed that property rezoned back to what it used to be, so they could move forward with that land sale, uh, right there on Harriet and Potter. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to add that it does help the applicant get prepared for their pre-application meeting, says these are the things that you need to consider. One of the things that I especially wanted to make sure it made it in here was, what does the community want? And is this in line with that? And have you actually talked to somebody about it? So that was also something I wanted to make sure I got in here, because, um, as we know, there have been some projects that come before us that may not necessarily be aligned with what the community's needs are. So when you're putting these applications together, did you ask yourself that question? Is this in line with the community's needs? Did you look at the master plan, which we will have an updated version coming soon? And so even for future land use, will this also apply for what we want in the future, not just now? So, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, y'all, this one down to the consistent agenda. We have a motion.
Some will. Second.
Second, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, say nay. Any border commission appointments left? We're good, okay. No ordinance first or second reading, so we're now down to new business.
Consider approval to purchase nine vacant parcels, case number LD twenty-four dash forty-six. The parcel IDs are noted. For twelve thousand, please see the Attachway County Public Records.
Some wills.
Second. Can properly move to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay. Passed.
Consider approval to adopt ratified tentative agreement between the city of Inglewood and Combe, Command Officers Association of Michigan.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the adopted ratified tentative agreement between the city of Inglewood and Combe.
Had a second.
Can properly move to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay. Passed.
Consider approval to adopt ratified tentative agreement between the city of Inglewood and Texas.
Some will support.
Probably move to support it, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay. All the participation.
It's my favorite part.
Your own business. You don't have to throw out a sweat.
Worked on some test there. Smelled other sick.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, council, to the viewing audience, the audience here. I just kind of make a note in front of the cottons, all the service. After Monday, November the twenty-fifth, we will be closed to the following Monday. Thank you, thank you.
Is there, I have a question really quick. Uh oh. No, it's just, uh, regarding, I got a phone call to yesterday regarding the letters that have started going out again. And I just wanted to confirm for the viewing audience and those on the Zoom and everything like that. That's just a continuation of all the water infrastructure stuff that started in twenty nineteen, correct? No, this is a loop. Oh, okay.
This new testing guideline.
Oh, the new testing guidelines that were passed by the EPA on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
It was.
Retired me to do some tests in the city of Inglewood. And we had, we set out twenty-four hundred land.
Okay.
Razzed man. My mom only that. You know for sure they have their service, but the majority of them, it's unknown. But we are scheduling appointments, uh, if they call into the office, we put them on the list, because we have to test them. We have fourteen years under the old law. Even if it's done, now we have ten.
Got you. And I read excerpts that some residents posted online. Um, their statements didn't actually match what was in the letter, but I just wanted to make sure I had a definitive answer when I'm countering rumors and make sure that we're all on the same page.
The letter is very clear.
I know. It absolutely is.
People get confused. Somebody posted that, oh, our water's not safe, we got lead in our water.
Let me explain to people so they can clearly understand. And not the waters, the pipes.
Exactly.
The pipe, you mean. How like that are in the ground, so has it been nothing?
Can you give us that number, or do you have it readily available? I know you said Wayne County was handling the filters again.
I don't have that number ready available. I could. We had, no.
Look.
We are, uh, we're putting on film. They'll put an iron.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah.
If I may, uh, I know that they ran out of filters. Do you know if they have a new stock in?
I don't know.
It'll.
Yeah, I don't know, because they've taken over the program. We no longer occupy the passing.
So anybody that needed have to go through Wayne County.
Over to Wayne County.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Lisa B., announcements.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So just a few, um, notices. Um, reminder that we are still accepting applications for Shop With A Cop. Last day is Friday, the twenty-second. Um, for our Shop With A Cop heroes and helpers. We're currently, right now, able to accommodate fifty kids out of over a hundred-plus applications that we've received. Um, we are encouraging everyone, um, to donate to make this event special for the community. So if you're interested in making a donation, I do have donation forms here with me. Um, you can drop them off at the station, um, and make any checks you can make payable to Inglewood Police Department. We're also encouraging all departments to join Shop With A Cop on December thirteenth. So we would like not only just our officers, but if, um, council members, volunteers would like to be heroes to help, um, with the kids' shopping experience, just to make it a smooth event. Um, I personally didn't attend last year, but I saw the photos, and I heard that, you know, it was a huge success. Um, and we just want to make sure that it's ran smoothly and, um, that all the kids just have a really good experience. Um, next we have Toys For Tots. Uh, they have donation boxes here at City Hall. Here we have them at the police station and at the rec center. Last day to drop off toys for Toys For Tots is December ninth. Um, Goodfellas, they are still accepting applications and can be dropped off here as well. City Hall, rec center, housing seminar center, and the police station. Um, and just want to remind everyone that our November newsletter is available. And if you have any information that you would like to add to our December, uh, newsletter, please, um, let me know by the twenty-first, and we can go ahead and put that in. Uh, we're, the police department is hosting a Little Caesar's Pizza fundraiser. So you can now not only purchase pizza kits, you can actually purchase what they call meal deal codes. So you can purchase a meal deal for like twenty-six dollars, and it includes like a combo, like maybe two pizzas, um, beverages, the desserts, and things of that nature. And then, um, it helps just for us to continue with the community initiatives for the youth and just for the community as a whole. So we encourage everyone, you know, you can go ahead and go online. I've posted on our socia's. I did leave some flyers over there, and there's a link to go ahead and purchase those kits or purchase the codes to be able to use now. Um, kits can be picked up, uh, January thirteenth from the station. Uh, wanted to just kind of make mention, we had a Neighborhood Watch Gun Safety Seminar last week. Um, we will be starting this up again the first of the year. Um, we are doing a raffle, so we encourage the community to come out. One of the things that we will be raffling off are ring cameras. Um, that's just to increase safety awareness within the neighborhood. So we're encouraging, um, the community to come out. Um, we're looking to restart up the Neighborhood Watch. We know it was something that was going on a while back, so we're looking to reinstate it. So we want to get captains for the area. Um, and again, we're doing the ring cameras just to, you know, promote more safety and awareness. One of the other things we did give away to individuals who showed up, we created just this little safety kit. And inside the safety kit is, um, a personal alarm, a whistle, and a flashlight. I know this is good for ladies, because you can put it on your keychain or on your purse. The alarm is extremely loud, and it has a flasher on it. So if you're somewhere, especially now with the holidays, um, you know, we encourage ladies, don't carry the big purses out here during the holidays, you know, keep everything close to you, put your purse under your jacket. But these are, you know, you make a noise, someone is bound to look. So it was just something we passed out to, um, those individuals that signed up. So men, y'all can get, uh, alarms too.
She'll laugh at you.
You gotta get the mirror lanyard so he wears it.
Get you a lanyard, okay, I got you, I got you. Get a nice one that light up. But, no, so we're, you know, looking to, we're going to continue having the meetings every month. And, you know, like I said, we want to just encourage the community to get involved, because of course, community members, you guys are the ones that knows what's going on in your neighborhoods. And so we just, you know, want to encourage you guys to work with us, so we can continue to keep the community safe. Um, also, we, you know, encourage the community to come out to these types of events. And we also want to know, what is another way that you guys would want to receive information? I know, um, we promote on socia's, we put flyers around, you know, at the rec center here and at the station. But, you know, definitely open to ideas of other ways for communicating different things that go on. So please don't hesitate to call the office, call me, um, let me know. And I'm, you know, just here to support everybody in, in any way that I can. Any questions?
Yes, what time is Shop With A Cop?
Uh, Shop With A Cop is at five o'clock.
Q station.
Uh, we're going to be meeting at the rec center.
Which?
Yes.
Is that any way, um, you can send like a calendar invite on our emails for stuff like that?
I sure can.
So I can just kind of like approve it, you know, it's on my calendar ideally.
Most definitely. Calendar invites are a plus for me.
Just, uh, real quick, as far as block clubs, would they contact you? Because I have people who have been asking about it, and I.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they can contact me. All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Cooper. That's a nice shirt.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and residents of the city of Inglewood. I am here once again as for the newspaper. I need everybody to get an ad. Most of you have said you're going to get an ad, so I just need you to get it in, so I can turn over the paper so it can be printed and be ready for December the sixth and seventh. And on the twentieth of December is our giveaway, uh, to the families, and it'll be here. Um, thank you, Mayor, um, for that. And also, um, I don't know if everybody knows about the We Rise Program. On Friday is the seniors', uh, the kids are so excited. Please come out and, um, let our kids serve our seniors. That's what it's for, it's just senior.
They Thanksgiving dinner on Friday, right?
Right.
They serve the adults, kids serve the adults.
Yeah, 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 it's for the seniors.
This Friday.
This Friday, the twenty-second. Yeah, from six, six to nine. Yeah, yeah, just want to do that. And once again, anybody that wants to do an ad or be a patron to the paper, or just give a donation, we accept it all. We trying to, no child without a Christmas. That's our motto, no child without a Christmas. We want everybody to have something. Be blessed.
Thank you. Dr. Shatina Jones.
Hello, everybody. I hope you all are having a good Monday. I had just come to you that remind you about our community reception, which is on December seventh at the Booker Dozer Center. It is from eleven AM to one PM. We will be acknowledging the following organizations, and please know it's free, so please show up. Um, the Inglewood Police Department, the Inglewood Task Force, the American International Academy, Spring Hill Missionary Baptist Church, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and the Wesleyan Bennett Foundation. Um, so we have a fun-filled, um, afternoon planned, and we would love to see you all there. Thank you so much. The date, December seventh, from eleven AM to one PM at Booker Dozer.
All right, thank you. Kim Law.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions. Um, I think they go to Jerome Bevins. I have a concern regarding the land that's on Lehigh in Inglewood Road. It's like so much, um, grass that's not being cut as trees. I don't know if that's somebody's property, but it's been like that for over two years. And I was wondering, is that something that you guys can handle? Because it makes that street looks terrible, terrible.
I'll look and call it.
Okay. Okay, because they cut the grass next to it, but then it's like trees and everything else going wild right next to it. Another concern is, um, regarding the water, filters. What's going on with that?
You just spoke through it earlier. We haven't passed out water filters for what?
It is twenty years, twenty-twenty. Twenty-two. They are now being handled by the Minnesota Services Health Department.
Well, how long is it going to take for them to fix this problem? As far as the water, we don't know where it's coming from or whatever.
Are you talking about the lead?
Yes.
Lead is not in your water, it's in your pipes.
Okay.
We're working on that now.
Okay.
Did you receive a letter from us?
No.
Okay.
But someone I know has received the letter, and I was wondering, maybe it's coming in the mail, and I didn't know.
Follow the steps from that night, it called me.
Okay. Another question is, what about the sidewalks? This has been going on for three to four years. Okay. Okay, just get off of me now. Anyway, regarding the sidewalks, I see that some neighborhoods or some on my street is fixed, but they haven't came to my house. They haven't sent me a letter. I go to their office, no one has any answer. They said, oh, we don't have anyone to fix it. I said, you don't have a contractor to fix sidewalks? That doesn't make any sense.
They said that to you?
Yes.
Right now, we have a sidewalk program, and we're going from district to district fixing and putting, placing in new sidewalks. What district do you live in?
I live right on Lehigh in, um, Inglewood Road. So.
We haven't got to that district yet.
But on my street, I see that different sections have been completed on this, as far as sidewalks.
It's because of the construction, probably. Um, well, some of ours have been repaired, because we did waterman breaks in there. We had to fix the restoration work, so. But we are, just got off, me and my aunt out today, about finding for phase two of, um, sidewalks, and this will be in, uh, southwest section of the city. Between, I guess, middle belt, between Chiggy or Avondale, off of that. No, no, that's what you are, you already did. You already. Five's there, the next section. Okay, you going from Avondale towards Michigan Avenue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And some of the sidewalks too, because I know some residents I know District Three are called with DT doing their, uh, replacement lines over there. And they, they started replacing the sidewalks as well, so some of those aren't even on us.
I think that's what it is.
That's why it's with.
District, yeah, it hasn't, it wasn't us. So how long do you think it'll take to get to our area? I mean, I've been calling for four years, so.
Um, this is the citywide project ramp, so, you know, as this funding come in, we will assess situations. When we start the worst part of the city, we're the worst thing for our, you know, real movie.
Because I noticed you guys are fixing in areas that no one is even living. Why would you start there instead of where residents are, the ones that's paying the taxes?
I had to fix all sidewalks in the city, ma'am.
So I didn't hear you.
Have to fix all sidewalks.
Saying where you're starting from, what's, what's the revenue as far as where you're starting at?
I'm not going. You could cut them off. Can you just move?
I came there, and they always say, well, you have to speak to a supervisor, and then we can't find you, or they have to find someone else. I, I mean, I take off work to come there.
But you had to kind of make appointment with me and my.
Okay, so can I make an appointment when this is over?
I'll talk to you after.
Okay, all right. Think that's it for now.
All right, thank you. What is it done?
While the city remains in litigation on the issue of public comment, I have been advised by our legal department that a stay has been entered stopping the effect of the preliminary injunction. Pending the outcome of the appeal, consistent with the ordinance which is in force, the emailed public comment has been delivered to the city council members and the mayor, and will be a permanent part of this record and attached to the minutes.
Madam Clerk, do you have anything else?
Uh, yes. Election debrief and community conversation will be at Yosemite Missionary Baptist Church, two nine zero six six Eaton Street in Westland, Friday, November the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, from six PM to eight PM. Topics of discussion, community outreach efforts, Inglewood's voter turnout, logistical challenges and successes, poll monitor reporting, future planning, feedback from community. Special guest speaker will be Kevin Talbert. Refreshments provided. And elections is over.
There, Mr. Trez. Councilwoman Rutherford.
No cause, Mayor.
Councilman Bishop.
Nothing for me at this time.
Councilwoman Scott.
No question.
Councilwoman Richardson.
No comment.
Councilwoman Howard.
Mayor Pro Tim. I'll break the ice. Um, real quick, again, November twenty-fifth at six thirty PM will be the, uh, joint annual meeting between the Planet Commission and the Inglewood City Council. That takes place at six thirty PM at the Inglewood Recreational Complex. So it won't be here in the council chambers, it will be at the recreational complex. Yeah. Um, and then secondly, uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to put out there, I don't know if you all saw the footage, but the funk of tears are going viral again. Uh, Mike Kelly is here with us, but I just, it was funny, because I have people across the country sending me this link saying, do you know them? And I sent the picture back, I was like, a little bit. You know, us folk being photographed together, but it was kind of, I don't know if you want to say refreshing, but like mind-blowing when you see celebrities like Snoop Dogg and others resharing the same video that was recorded a couple of weeks ago right here in Inglewood Recreational Complex. Now, of course, they're layering it with different music and making jokes and stuff, but hey, notoriety is notoriety. Just like when they called y'all boys the unks. But, uh, yeah, that was a good, a good time was had, and I didn't expect it to go viral like that. So congratulations on the continued notoriety and much success to you guys. And of course, like I said before, I look forward to making sure that I can support you in any way, shape, or form. And that's all I have for the story.
Just real quickly, I want to thank Clerk's Office, all of our, um, election day employees. Election went well. Um, uh, we had a great turnout in Inglewood, so I'm happy about that. At the same time, I'd like to say congratulations to our president-elect, Donald Trump. Look, there's a lot of lessons, a lot of lessons that can be learned from this election. Uh, question numbers, look at what happened, and do some self-reflection, and figure out where you want to go from here. Uh, because we are here. Um, and on a lighter note, the same day we had the veterans event, we had a cat show in the city of Inglewood. I have never been to a cat show, but I went to the cat show that day. Who walked, me and Clint. We walked through the cat show. It was actually kind of fun, y'all, you know, we got to broaden our horizons a little bit. I've seen the dog Westminster Show on ESPN, never been to a dog show either. But you should have saw, first of all, the parking lot was packed. People came from all around the state for this cat show. How many cats you think were there?
It was a whole.
Couple hundred cats on our. Couple hundred cats on our basketball court. Act out. People who would have never came to the city of Inkster were in the city of Inkster that day. So we went out, talked to folks, learned a little bit about different breeds of cats. So. Um, next time we do something like that, definitely should come out and check it out because it was kind of cool. No, no, no. That's all I got. You got a motion to adjourn? Oh.
May I go back? Come, you want to talk about your turkey drive?
Oh, yeah, I'm tripping. Uh, see, I thought Steve took care of it because he talked about the joint meeting next Monday at six thirty. At five thirty next Monday at the complex, we're going to give away free turkeys. Um, I think we got at least a hundred and fifty turkeys, maybe a few more. First come, first served. So from five thirty to six thirty, we'll be giving away turkeys. And then we'll go into have our joint planning and council meeting at the complex. So so make sure if you know anybody who needs a turkey, have them come out. We got a motion to adjourn? Uh, probably moved to second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, say nay. Thirty-one minutes.
That's it since eighteen. Out of this, seven thirty-one.
Boy, is she good. She gonna be rich.
So. So last this capital, I will look at thirty-five.